And all those who are watching us at home on TV, thank you for taking an interest in your government. Before we get started, I need to do the road call. I will consider myself present and in the room. Councilmember Spears, are you here?
I am here.
Okay, Councilmember Spears is here. Councilmember Barnett, are you here?
Here.
Councilmember Anderson, are you here?
Here.
Councilmember Grady, are you here?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Ravenbark, are you here?
Absolutely.
Okay. And Mayor Protem, are you here?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, everybody's here and accounted for. So this time I'd like to call on Councilmember Clifford Barnett to do our invocation and ask that everyone remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag afterward.
Let us pray. Eternal God, we come together today to thank you. We thank you with an attitude of gratitude. We're so thankful that you've kept us healthy. We're thankful that you've protected our families. We thank you that you've even blessed our city and our country. We ask you now to bless the work that we do. Give us your wisdom, your favor, and your kindnesses as we do the work that makes our city a better place to live. But we ask it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
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 Pledge allegiance to the flag.
Justice for all.
Our first order of business is our consent agenda. Items one through five. Are there any items that any councilman would like to hear separately? If not, what are the wishes of this council?
I'd move the consent agenda.
Now, we have a question by Councilmember Ravenbark to move the consent agenda.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Barnett. Okay. I will vote into the affirmative. Mr. Spears, how do you vote?
Aye.
How do you vote, Councilmember Barnett?
Aye.
How do you vote, Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
How do you vote, Councilmember Grady?
Aye.
How do you vote, Councilmember Ravenbark?
Aye.
How do you vote, Mayor Protem?
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. That brings us to our next item business, which is our public information. We have no public speakers scheduled to speak with us this evening. That brings us to our first item business, which is public hearings. We have item PH1A, which is an ordinance approving the First Amendment to amend, amended and restated development agreement with NNP-4 Cape Fear River LLC for the River Lights master plan development. And then item PH1B, which is the ordinance modifying an existing conditional district to rezone 120.20 acres of a larger 1,358.72 acre tract known as River Lights from R7CD residential conditional district to MXCD mixed-use conditional district for a new mixed-use center as part of the River Lights master plan development. And I understand that we would be hearing both of these items as one public hearing. Is that correct, Mr. Joy, our city attorney?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Per the new N60D, that is expressly authorized.
Okay, very good. At this time, I'd like to recognize the city manager, Mr. Sterling Chin. Ms. Chinam?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Mr. Brian Chambers, senior plan, will overview this item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As the mayor stated, this is a request to modify the existing development agreement and conditional district for the River Lights master plan development. This River Lights includes approximately 1,358 acres located between Bernard's and Motts Creek along the Cape Fear River on the south side of the city. This map shows the site within the context of the surrounding area. The area blue is the area of the site that is being requested for the rezoning. We do have several photos of the site looking up and down River Road. The top left is the roundabout at Lorraine Drive, and the bottom right is just north of Motts Creek. In May of 2009, city council approved the voluntary annexation of River Lights and approved an initial zoning of R7CD residential conditional district for approximately 1,155 acres and MXCD mixed-use conditional district for approximately 203 acres. In June of that year, the development agreement was executed between the city and the Newland Development Community Company. In March of 2013 and February of 2016, city council approved modifications to both the conditional district and the development agreement. And then in May of 2018, council approved an amended and restated development agreement for River Lights. Some of these amendments can be found on page two of the case summary. The applicant proposes to modify certain provisions of the development agreement to coincide with the requested rezoning modification. These include an increase of the maximum number of residential units across the project, the removal of the limit on the reallocation of residential units between phases, and then to adjust the timing and scope for the completion of the required transportation improvements. And this is a slide that I shared with you at your briefing. The current agreement limits the overall density of River Lights to 2,290 units and the overall commercial square footage to 1 million square feet. The agreement also includes a provision to allow for an increase in residential density to a maximum of 2,790 units with a corresponding reduction in commercial square footage. The conversion factor in the current agreement allows for an additional single-family dwelling in exchange for 500 square feet reduction in commercial space and a townhome unit in exchange for a 300 square foot commercial space. The applicant proposes to amend the agreement to increase the overall density limit to 3,350 units and then leave that existing conversion factor in place. The amendment also clarifies that a townhome or an apartment unit would require the 300 square foot reduction in commercial area. The current agreement also allows for a maximum of 25% of the residential density to be transferred between development phases. This agreement also recognizes that no individual tract or phase can exceed the buyright density of the underlying zoning. The applicant is proposing remove this provision, and since the individual tracks would continue to be limited to the density permitted, staff believes this provision is not necessary and agrees with its removal. And finally, the current agreement identifies transportation improvements that are required as the overall buildout of River Lights progresses. Proposed amendment removes those improvements that have been completed or deemed no longer necessary, and then establishes an updated timeline for completion of the remaining items. City staff, trapping engineering, and transportation planning have reviewed the proposed amendment and believe that they adequately address traffic concerns and necessary transportation improvements. This is the current master plan. Again, the applicant proposes to modify the existing conditional district to rezone a portion, which is outlined in red on your screen, from R7CD residential to MXCD mixed-use to allow for a new master plan mixed-use center within River Lights. This is the proposed master plan for that area. The land development code requires a preliminary site assessment for the establishment of any newly created MX district. The applicant has provided documentation of a site plan that satisfies the requirements of the MX district. The district also requires a minimum mixture of uses. The use categories include residential, office, commercial, institutional, and entertainment lodging, and the proposed master plan includes a mix that satisfies that requirement. The traffic data indicates that Independence Boulevard, River Road, Lorraine Drive, and Sanders Road are all operating within their design capacity. And the trip generation data indicates that the uses allowed under the current development agreement compared to the proposed uses would result in a decrease in the estimated vehicle trips generated from the overall development. The site is identified as within an area of opportunity, and River Road is considered a community parkway as identified in our create women's and comprehensive plan growth strategies map. The plan encourages mixed-use centers and new and traditional development patterns. The plan calls for mixed-use development that provides a range of services near integrated residential development to help reduce motor vehicle trips. And the plan also supports the integration and mix of uses that contribute to the city's livability, manages future growth, and then provides bike, pedestrian, and transit accessible destinations. Staff believes proposed modification allows for a new mixed-use center to be created that would provide a variety of uses and a range of housing types. Proposed mixed-use center would provide access to services for residential uses to be developed both as part of this development and serve the surrounding areas. Staff believes the request is consistent with our comprehensive plan and the city's stop at focus areas. We believe the request is reasonable in the public interest and are recommending conditional approval. I'd be happy to answer any questions, and I believe the applicant is prepared to make a presentation as well.
Are there any questions for our city staff? Mr. Grady?
Could you go back? I think it's two slides. I kind of lost track. Another one. Okay, no, no, one more. This'll do for one question. Okay, I noticed on your proposed park, now I thought the city park was going to be on the other end of the development. Is that some change, or am I just wrong on where the park was going to be?
There is a park on the other end. I'm not sure if the development agreement is specific to two separate parks, but there is a proposed public park being included in this mixed-use center.
I was surprised to see that. I thought that we had concluded we were doing a park at the other side and not doing this one. But we will ask the applicant what he thinks about that. Okay. Oh, the other thing is, if this is passed, they have the ability to build more residences. Do you know how many residences have already been built?
I believe it's approximately 1,500 lots and/or units have been approved or constructed. If you look on PH1B-9, there's a table that shows the approved residential developments, and it looks like 1,467 lots or units have been approved. I can't say how many are constructed. I don't know how many building permits have actually been issued for all those lots, but that's the number of units and lots that have been approved at this point.
Does that include the apartments? Because I know one of the issues we've been getting from emails is there's two fairly high-rise apartment buildings.
Yes, it does, sir.
And those apartments are included in that number?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chambers.
Thank you.
This time, I'd like to recognize the applicant.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council. My name is Michael Lee, and I'm with Lee Case, and I'm here on behalf of the applicant this evening. I guess I will, since I don't have a clicker, I guess I just say next slide at the appropriate time. Thank you for having me here this evening. I'm also here with Nick Casala, Kenny Johnson, and Richard Collier, all part of the development team. Essentially, I wanted to go through just a few things about Newland and Newland Communities, and then I'll also address specifically the project and why we're here this evening. I'm going to try not to repeat what Brian has already done, so I may ask that a few slides be through pretty quickly. This project started, gosh, Newland acquired the property in 2006. My son was going to kindergarten, and now he's a junior in college, so it's been going on for quite some time. When they acquired the property, and even now, there was a real focus on the environment and low-impact design. Newland Communities then and now had these cornerstone principles, which were kind of the guiding points for development. Create a place that was a sense of place, a home, healthy living systems, and real innovation, not just in the way they designed, but in the way they interact with the environment. And that's why they created things like wildlife corridors to get from where River Road is down to the river and some other really innovative ideas here in this particular project that they haven't had the opportunity in other projects. Next slide, please. The project history, I think, is really important. River Road is new. It was constructed, it's about three miles long. There's about 65 acres of public rights of way that's been dedicated, which also includes River Road. There's the multi-use path. It's almost two and a half acres along River Road. A lot of folks don't realize that a utility agreement was entered into with the CFPWA for some very significant water and sewer improvements, not just for purposes of the River Lights project, but outside of River Lights. They reserve park sites, and I recall a question as I was walking up, I heard about where the parks are. They're on either end of the site. There's a park over by the new proposed MX3, and then there's a park on the other side across from, right there next to the CPNL Progress Energy or Duke substation. There is a dedication of a fire station site that's changed over time. Fire services wanted to move it to another location, so we're doing that closer to the town center. There's a 15-acre school site. Newland's been in really active discussions, especially recently, about the timing of that school site. MX3, that rezoning, will allow Newland to go ahead and provide some of the infrastructure that New Hanover County Schools is going to need to go ahead and start that development process. There's about 640 acres of open space, and whenever I say that, it's hard to kind of put that into context. UNCW, the main campus, is 647 acres, so it's almost the size of the main campus of UNCW. The city manages about 744 acres of park sites. This is 640 acres of open space, and it's a really significant amount of area. There's a lake on site, as many of you know, 30 acres with a trail that goes around it. And there's a boardwalk that allows access to the river that's open to the general public that's really pretty amazing. In the top right-hand corner of this slide shows a picture that I took when I did a site visit this afternoon. Next slide, please. This just gives some of the history. I know you've already read this in your staff report, so I'm not going to go through all the details. In 2013 is when this conversion factor first was implemented in the development agreement for the residential versus commercial, and I think the first resident moved in in 2016 or 2017. The 2018 amendment and restatement really was to clarify the document because it had been around for almost 10 years to kind of take out those pieces that were no longer applicable because they were already developed to make it a little bit easier document to manage from the city perspective and also from the developer's perspective. Next slide, please.
Excuse me, Michael, we're getting some feedback from one of the rooms. Could you either mute the room or please not talk? Because we cannot hear, I'm sorry. Maybe one of the councilmen, I don't know. One of the rooms is, we're hearing some feedback coming back into this room.
I'm hearing him fine on our end. I think, I think we all are hearing Michael just fine.
Want to go ahead and proceed?
Okay, go ahead, proceed, please. I'm sorry.
And I'm sorry, I'm talking a little fast. I know I've got a 15-minute time limitation, so I'm going to try and get through this. The current zoning, as you know, is R7CD and MX, subject to a development agreement, and we're really looking for that one section to be MX3 moved to, from an SF or single-family R7 cluster to mixed-use. And then I'm going to run through quickly the four factors when we go through the particular presentation. Next slide, please. Just kind of giving you an orientation, the yellow box is the entirety of the project, and then MX3 is in the orange box. Next slide, please. Here's a good kind of bookends of the two, what is proposed to be the two MX parcels. One that you see on the left part of your screen, that is Marina Village, and then the right part of your screen, which is the proposed new mixed-use site. Next slide, please. So just kind of a quick outline, and I know Brian already did this. We're really looking at the tract allocation, moving units between the different parcels, never exceeding what is allowed in the code. Also looking at lifting the cap on the conversion formula, and then some traffic improvements were clarified at the request of staff to make sure we had some dates certain put into the document. Next slide, please. So first, the tract allocation, and Brian went through this pretty thoroughly, so I'm just going to touch on it. It just enables you to move density from one tract to another more than 25%. So if you had 10 in one, 10 in another, you could have 15 in one, but then you're reduced to five in the other. And again, the guardrails on that really is that you can't exceed what's already provided or allowed in the code. Next slide, please. So this is the conversion formula. Originally, you had 2290 units back in 2009 with a million square feet. Again, to kind of understand what a million square feet looks like, that's like 10 Super Walmarts or 20, 50,000 square foot Lowe's Home Centers. It's a significant amount of square footage. In 2013, we looked at a conversion factor that gave some flexibility to increase the number of residential units depending on what was going on in the market. And the reason for the conversion factor is because Newland had built all this upfront infrastructure put into place. They wanted to make sure if you increased the residential units, that you had to reduce the commercial units so that you never exceeded the infrastructure impact. And then this proposed amendment, looking at 3,350, and then really as the cap, not that Newland's going to do that amount, but it allows them to have this conversion factor. So as we continue to move forward in what is somewhat unknown because of the pandemic, there's some flexibility and planning that can be done by utilizing those numbers and the guardrails with infrastructure. Next slide, please. So here's the current master plan. Brian already went through this, so I'm just going to flip to the next slide, please. So this shows you the existing R7 cluster or CD, and what a lot of people, some folks are concerned that you can have apartments in this R7CD if we change it to MX, when in fact you can actually put apartments by right in this particular tract already. What Newland wants to do is create a mix of uses on this particular tract, and I'll kind of explain with the next slide why that is. So if you can see at the top of your screen, you've got the Home Depot, and off to the left of that, you have a Walmart, a Lowe's Foods, and then off to the right, you see the Harris Teeter, which is up Saunders Road, and then you see kind of a sea of lots in between that. What this will do is it'll give a neighborhood commercial center that not only benefits River Lights, but benefits those other neighborhoods you see around. One of them is Silver Terra, and you can see kind of how many residential units are there, where they can access this particular parcel directly from the top of the parcel and also through River Road. And to the right, you'll see kind of a rendering of what the sidewalk scape is really, they're planning for it to look like. Next slide, please. I think you already saw this in what Brian provided, so I'm just going to ask for the next slide to come up. And again, Brian kind of went through the plan that was submitted. And off to the right, we should have put it in green. I don't know why we didn't, but the gray area is actually the park above it, where the pink space is, that is open space. And if you look to the orange, just to the left of that, that's the school site. Just to the top of that school site is Arrowwood Park, which connects back into Mary C. Williams. And I think what the school system is looking at is doing some kind of hybrid system there, whether it's grade three through five or four and five on this site, and then having K through three maybe on the Mary C. Williams after it's renovated and utilizing some of the park space. I know that's been some of the discussions, even though it hasn't been finalized yet. Next slide, please. So I know that Brian went through the traffic numbers. As you can see, this is actually pulled right out of his staff report, so I'm just going to kind of flip to the next slide, please. And again, even though Brian did present this, I think it's really important for people to know that when you convert, when the conversion factor was derived, it was really to protect the fact that all this upfront infrastructure that was planned, you know, over 10 years ago was not going to come up on the short end of the stick if you actually converted. And you can see that coming to fruition here because the anticipated trip numbers have gone down actually quite dramatically because, as the engineers will tell you, the retail development is really, or the commercial development's really going to drive trips more than residential. Next slide, please. So going on to the four factors, I'm not going to read these out to you because you know what they are. Next slide, please. So looking at the changing conditions that justify passage of the amendment, it's really, this area has really evolved over the last 12 years. We've been through two recessions, one pandemic, and we still are kind of, you know, feeling our way through what it's going to look like over the next few years. This gives some flexibility to be able to manage those changes as they come about. Next slide, please. Four factors, the second one is, is it consistent with the future land use plan and other adopted plans? Specifically, Newland was carved out as an area of opportunity and really focusing on mixed-use, and that's exactly what we're doing with this particular rezoning. Next slide, please. The expected impact on the neighborhood, it's dramatically, it's going to help. You've got this internal capture so that Newland can utilize these services, the commercial services that are going to be there, whether it's a neighborhood market or other retail shops. And then also, you're going to have existing development that is in the Silver Terra and other neighborhoods that are on the top of the screen where that map is, and you can see a red circle where they'll be able to directly access the site, getting to the neighborhood market center, also getting to the school site that's been delineated there, working their way around to the park. So it'll enable, again, not just the community and residents of River Lights, but folks in the surrounding area. Next slide, please. Other circumstances which justify the amendment in the public interest? This is really going to provide a live, work, play environment and really is something that I know that the city has been focused on in the future land use plan and specifically as this particular tract. But one of the other things to really consider is the reduction in the number of trips that are on the road, the internal capture, the access to all the pedestrian trails, the multi-use path that folks can utilize to get to this particular part of the project. Next slide, please. So we're here for two reasons. One, for the amendment to development agreement, and then number two, for the rezoning. I realize we have one hearing and that you will take two votes, but we'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have on either one of these. Again, my client's here, and also Richard Collier is here with McKimmon Creed to answer any technical questions. Next slide, please. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time, and I think I've just hit my 15-minute limit.
Any questions for Mr. Lee? Mr. Grady? Mr. Grady, I believe you're muted.
Sorry. On the traffic studies that were done, did it consider the commuting traffic coming from the southern part of the county?
I'm going to ask Richard to come up and kind of address that since he can answer the technical questions. And he's probably having to walk in from the back row.
Mr. Grady, I think you spoke, I'm sorry, Richard Collier with McKimmon Creed. Mr. Grady, you asked about the southern side and the commuting traffic. When we...
I was wondering whether the traffic numbers considered the commuter traffic that passes through there from the southern end of the county?
Direct answer is yes. When we first began the traffic impact analyses and deriving all of the traffic, we did a small area plan that incorporated the area down to Snow's Cut and then up into Carolina Beach Road in a much larger area. So all that was taken into account in the initial planning and zoning, and then in the traffic study itself, all of those trips were included into the study, the study to cover it as we moved forward through development.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anybody else?
Can I have an observation? It's not really a question. Where did Mr. Lee go?
I forgot that.
I just want to make an observation.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, your client, your client has a lot of unhappy clients. We got a lot of emails from folks that are living out there. I don't know why, but they have a very different idea of what's being positive here. They see it as a real change, and that it's all going to be high-rise apartments. And I think because of the two that are being built out there right now are probably the reason they're concerned about it. And I did notice today, I took a drive around, haven't been down there in a while, and I did notice that those apartment buildings are kind of right in the front yards of some single-family homes. So I think that's got them concerned. I think you got some public relations work to do with your clients. You read the letters, you'd see it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. At this time, I'm going to open up, if there's no other questions from council at this moment, we'll open up the public hearing. Public meeting, hearing will be set for 30 minutes, 15 minutes aside, 15 for, 15 against. We'll start with the against side first, and please state your name for the record and where you live.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Michael San Clemente. I live at 538 Deveraux Drive in the River Lights area. I hope you all agree with me that the purpose of zoning is to create a balance of residence... is to create a balance of resident, residential, commercial, and open space that is beneficial to the city, developer, and existing residents, while being a compelling place to live for future residents. This is how I approached zoning when I was the vice chair of the zoning board in Harrell, New Jersey. I understand better than most how critical your role is and how thankless it can often seem. The River Lights community was planned as a residential community with businesses and open space. That was the start of development and defined the character of the river, of how River Lights was becoming. The River Road Small Area Plan of two thousand six stated that potentially forty-eight hundred residents, residential units in the area from River Road, Carolina Beach Road to Sanders, and five hundred and eighty thousand square feet of new commercial and retail space, three hundred and sixty thousand square feet of new office space, and more than one hundred thousand square feet of additional institutional space. It also goes into detail, the plan that should, and I quote, "ensure aesthetic quality that will incorporate features in plans and will highlight scenic nature of the riverfront, require design elements for new development and improvements that are visibly enhancing," end quote. Since two thousand nine, the applicant has come before council to decrease a portion of commercial property and transfer it to residential use, thus increasing the residential units to twenty-two hundred ninety in River Lights. Two thousand thirteen, the applicant received another approval, increased the residential units to over twenty-seven hundred. This proposal will increase, this proposal today will increase the new residential units to over thirty-three hundred, reducing the commercial space to forty-seven, four hundred and seventy thousand to six hundred eighty-two thousand square feet, about eleven acres. The proposal dedicates a portion of the land to open space and a park. The issue with this proposal is that open space and park are in wetlands near Motts Creek. According to a report, two thousand eighteen, environmental quality of Wilmington and New Hanover County watersheds by the University of North Carolina Wilmington, Motts Creek, which drains into the Cape Fear River, has an overall quality of poor. In fact, previous reports, and we can go back to two thousand fourteen, rated the water quality a poor. This development, with the increase of impervious coverage, may have a more damaging effect to the watershed. In addition, the proposed park between Motts Creek and Duke Energy's right-of-way to a substation, this, when you look at this park, you cannot use it. It is wetlands, which is unusable. And also, it's between a right-of-way. That's not a park, and it cannot be accessed with the community. The application does not include a stormwater management plan for public review. During the applicant's open house presentation, this was back in July, I asked one of the engineers, was a stormwater management plan gonna be reviewed by the public? The engineer told me the ground is sand and the water will go straight down. In addition, the application stated the M X three parcel is not subject to the River Lights' master stormwater management plan, but provides its own plan. The application does not provide a stormwater management plan for public view. Where will this water drain? Will it affect the nearby communities and neighborhoods? Will it flood Motts Creek? None of those questions have been answered. During the same meeting in July, I was told a hundred and twenty-one acres are being developed in this proposal, and I asked if there was an environmental impact statement. The answer I received was no, it was done in two thousand seven and will not be done again. This proposed development will have a major impact to the land, the sand dunes, wildlife, and the existing infrastructure. Traffic is also an issue in this application, in applications, when any applications are proposed. This application contains a traffic study with current trips and proposed trips. Stated in the application, Table Five, the current development agreement has a seven hundred and fifty thousand square foot shopping center. The current zoning is still R seven, and there is no seven hundred and fifty thousand square foot shopping center. The applicant is proposing a reduction in commercial space, and any reference to seven hundred and fifty thousand square feet of commercial use is inaccurate. This traffic study fails to take, excuse me, fails to take actual counts, failed to describe the times for the A M. and P M. trips, and the figures in the table are estimated based on the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation, tenth edition, two thousand eighteen. Taking this report and removing the shopping center, which does not exist today, the current development agreement for average weekday, two-day, excuse me, two-way volume trips is twenty-two thousand five hundred and fifty-eight. With a proposed shopping area of seven hundred and fifty thousand square feet, the trips are forty-six thousand two hundred and twenty-two. The proposed use is thirty-six thousand eight hundred and ninety. The proposed use is more in line with what the applicant is asking for. Regardless, there is a increase in traffic on River Road. The traffic report also reveals the intent of this application, which is decreasing commercial development and increasing residential development.
Excuse me, sir?
Yes.
There was a fifteen minutes for, against, and fifteen minutes for. There was a total of thirty-minute timeline. I think the time that you've taken so far, they've been, they just told me that there's several of the speakers, and I wanted to just try to fit everybody in. If you could wrap it up so we can get the other folks to speak also, that'd be great.
Briefly, the Wilmington Comprehensive Plan of two thousand thirteen, the growth strategy, contains the River Lights principles. They state implemented adoption, master plans encouraging mixed use, encouraging new development that meets the intent of adopted plans, encouraging public water access, conceptual master plan show clustering residential. But most important, the River Lights shows a low-density, single-family neighborhood, and the source of the River Lights principles is Newland Communities. The application in front of you has quant, is gonna have consequences for decades. Item B, which states, and I quote, "modify the existing development agreement to increase the maximum number of residential use across the project, remove the limits on the reallocation of residential units." All this is part of losing control from the city and the existing residents. As the city modifies ordinance to slow the growth of Wilmington, this proposal is the complete opposite. An apartment complex that is under construction today is totally out of character, written River Lights, and does not comply with the River Lights principles. If item B is approved, the applicant can build another apartment complex without planning, commission, or council approval. As I conclude, as a former member of the zoning board in Harrell, New Jersey, I view zoning as a way a town, applicant, and residence can benefit from an application. Public input is essential. When I was part of the zoning board, we as River Light residents are not asking for the applicant to go away. We are asking to be part of the planning of the River Lights community. We want our, we would like to put our input in any of these plans. That is what we are asking for. We are asking for the council to reject this proposal that is under your consideration. We appreciate what the applicant has done with a video and also an open house. But we would like to be part of this applicant, be part of the future planning, and we're asking you to reject this application. Also, I just would like to put on the record some information that I received late. It's an M X three rezoning deviates from the, create the Wilmington Comprehensive Plan. Is that okay? Okay. And we'd like to put this on the record. Thank you, and we hope you consider our proposal.
Thank you, sir. Could you please give me the time, Madam Clerk, for the opposition?
Mr. Mayor, there is four minutes and thirty-one seconds left. It's my understanding there are five folks that would like to speak, and they're all speaking in opposition. We don't have anyone that I know of as in favor, but it's four minutes and thirty-one seconds left, and it's five people to speak.
I will extend the time to total of twelve minutes. Each speaker will be allotted for three minutes. And, and please keep it, as soon as, and please keep a time on it. And as soon as the time is up, I will ask for the speaker to please wrap it up.
Okay, if the speakers will please note the mayor's direction in the hall. Each speaker is left with three minutes each, so the alarm will go off to let you know your time is up. So please, please give us your comments. Thank you.
My name is Tyra Lalo. I live at eight forty-five Bruins Edge Terrace in the River Lights community. Honorable Mayor and City Council members, I want to thank you for allowing me to share my concerns regarding this important issue. Concerns that I think many of fellow homeowners within the River Lights community feel the same about. I think we can all agree that Wilmington is not San Francisco, is not New York, is not Asheville, is not Myrtle Beach. Wilmington is special. It's in a class all by itself. The River Lights community is also in a class all by itself, with miles of beautiful wetlands, natural landscapes, lush green trees, nearby beaches, and the gorgeous Cape Fear River just minutes away. I believe that our community can appropriately be viewed as a sort of hidden gem, unique. Prior to our moving here, my husband and I had done extensive research in trying to find that perfect place, and we were ecstatic when we found Wilmington, North Carolina. We were filled with excitement and gratitude and felt really blessed when we moved within the River Lights community. Along with hundreds of other homeowners within the community, we too felt confident that we had done our due diligence prior to purchasing our home. So we felt that the original proposed master plan of a lovely mixed-use community was reasonable and well-thought-out. But most importantly, we were assured that the overall natural beauty of the area would not be greatly affected. So you can imagine our surprise when, not long after we had moved into our home, we were informed that the original twenty-two hundred ninety multi-use units had now been increased to two thousand seven hundred and ninety units. And while the developer feels that River Lights is nowhere near to becoming a high-density development, we all know that when someone goes to purchase their home, one of the large decisions that they make, or that's a part of their decision, is the overall look and feel of an area. And we were left scratching our heads when we found out that there was yet this other request to have other apartment buildings, in my opinion. I don't know that they probably will deviate from that. But while this was disappointing to hear, we were hopeful that the zoning board would be the voice of reason and put a stop to the overdevelopment within our community. But sadly, we were wrong. And now, this developer is hoping that you will, rubber stamped, plans to build yet another five hundred and sixty units within our community. And if that's not enough of an insult, they also want you to give them carte blanche to completely eliminate the original cap that was in place from the start. It doesn't take a rocket scientist to figure out that the in-continued increase in the number of homes within our community will quickly turn the heavily-traveled streets already, that are already being traveled into glorified parking lots, if we're not wise. This is unreasonable, it's not fair, and it's certainly not right. So I would just ask that you would please not let us down. When we voted to have you in office, we did so because we trusted that you would listen to your constituents, that you would hear our valid concerns and make every effort to do the right thing in the interest of all the people who live within a community. So I would ask that you would please look at the big picture. Please make that the priority. And I said, and I also would say that instead, we would ask that you would become the voice of the people by casting your vote to oppose the rezoning of the land within the River Lights community. Doing so will send a clear message that you too want to keep Wilmington special, unique, beautiful, and one of a kind. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
My name's Jeff Fanouken. I live at forty-five oh-four Bernard's Landing Road in the Arrowhead subdivision. I think I'm a, I really don't know what to really say, but traffic and all that in my neighborhood is very thin. And I think with all this new development and all that, with all the families and all the kids that live in that neighborhood, I think it's gonna overburden that neighborhood. I'd just like for you to think about that. All the apartments and houses, all the extra traffic going through the neighborhood. I'd like for y'all to think about that. I'd rather, if you're gonna put a cut through there, not put it through our neighborhood, go somewhere else with it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. My name is Wanda Williams, and I live on Lorraine Drive. I've lived there for over thirty-five years. When we first moved there, it was a very quiet area, very serene and very nice. However, with the increase in traffic, due to the fact that my street opens onto River Road and my mailboxes are across the street, I have a hard time going to my mailbox because where my house is situated, there was a curve, and you can't see the cars coming around the curve until you're in the middle of the street. It's personal for me because we can't even back out of our driveway. We have to back into it and drive out of it to be able to not get in a wreck. So for the influx of traffic, it has been unreasonable, a very unreasonable amount of traffic that goes on that street because it's the street that comes off of River Road. You cut through, you get to Civil Lake, to go down to get the Walmart and those other places that you mentioned. So if you could consider the amount of traffic and the amount of children, as the gentleman spoke just now, about in that neighborhood, riding bikes and playing in the street, it is a detriment. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, please.
Hi, I'm Simonia Ann Freeman, and I am a resident in Arrowhead. I live off of Stillwell Road. And what I want to express my concern about in opposition to this increased development is due to traffic patterns increasing in the area tremendously over the last few years since the development of River Lights. The issue has made outside activities along Lorraine Drive, Silver Lake Road, Ilex Drive, and other connecting roads hazardous for the residents and their families, and also the students and children, excuse me, the students that attend Mary C. Williams School District. Lorraine Drive, Silver Lake Road, and Ilex Drive are very narrow roads that can barely manage the current traffic flow. Additional development will destroy the green space, mature trees, as well as drive out animals from their natural habitats. I'm requesting that you, our representatives, consider tabling this request until additional road infrastructure updates can be made and/or guaranteed improvements will be made to the current roads. As a property owner and taxpayer, I make this request to you as our elected officials to do what is best for the safety and well-being of the citizens of our great community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hi, evening. My name is Michael Barone. I live at forty-five forty-two Old Town Street. I only have a few points to make. First off, I moved here with my wife because I saw the development, the development plans, and I saw the master plan and the handouts. And I also saw what Wilmington was doing, and it all seemed like goodness, and it still is. I especially enjoyed reading and still do the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan. What I'm seeing now is that the MX three rezone is not in agreement with that plan. In fact, it deviates from that plan, and it's quite easy to show. It's simple. It reduces mixed use. It reduces mixed use because it adds five-hundred-and-sixty residents, but it removes exactly up to two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand square feet of commercial property. So don't be fooled by the sense of argument that MX three is bringing commercial and mixed use into this community. It cannot. It's reducing the mixed use. Secondly, it decentralizes the mixed use as advertised in the original master plan and annotated in the comprehensive plan. You can simply go to the Growth Strategies section of the comprehensive plan, you will find that River Lights was advertised to the town, city, as being a single-family community with a central node for providing access to work and retail and services, not to mention transportation centrality and et cetera. So that is not mixed use, removing the commercial side of this. This paralyze and parallels and analog, and it's an analogy analogous to what's happening in downtown with respect to CDMU. And I think some of you are familiar with that, building and then putting up token amounts of commercial and then exchanging it for high-density. I want to get to four point, more points quickly. Four disturbing items in the MX three rezone proposal, the traffic study. Traffic study shows a reduction in traffic, but the actual commercial allowed in River Lights is not used. They used a smaller number than what they actually are allowed. So there's four-hundred-and-seventy-thousand to six-hundred-and-eighty-two-thousand square feet of capable commercial use. They used only a small portion of that in their traffic study. If you use the real numbers, traffic goes up. Secondly, a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-square-foot warehouse is part of the proposed uses as annotated in their proposal. It doesn't mean they're gonna do it, but that's what they said. What they told our residents and community is they were gonna build a hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand square feet of office space and then buried in the specs is a one-hundred-and-twenty-five-thousand-square-foot warehouse. That's huge, by the way. That's, it's, it's, it's big. Thirdly, in the, in this, in the context of the same proposal, they, they show a one-thousand-one-hundred mid-rise multifamily units, which as far as I can tell, indicates strongly that there will be more apartment buildings like Middleburg. And certainly, I don't think there's anything that will prevent it with MX three approval. They could be larger than Middleburg. They could be up to six stories, as I understand. We're already at four stories of obtrusive buildings. Fourthly, recently, they submitted a Capstone High Density Rental Project. I've reviewed that project. It's not so pretty. Capstone doesn't have a great reputation. The smallest units are single-family. They call them cottages. They look, they're twenty-four by twenty-four feet, less than six-hundred square feet of living space, the size of my small two-car garage. This company specializes in building rental dormitory units. These plans are direct copy and paste from similar properties that this developer has, has created. Developer being Capstone, being considered strongly and in the town submittal with the planning department. My conclusion is this. River Lights was established to integrate diverse uses into a single development with access to, for residents to work, shop, and obtain services from a centralized Marina Village. Instead, the developer continues to drive River Lights to be an intensive, single-family and multifamily residential project with a token amount of MX uses, excuse me. The MX three rezone would further enable the developer to significantly deviate from the Create Wilmington Comprehensive Plan for Mixed Use. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was our last speaker, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, are there any other comments that have been sent over to your office electronically?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. The city clerk's office received thirty-eight electronic comments and concerns regarding this project. There were four in favor and thirty-four against the project. I did send all of these to the council today at eleven-twenty-seven a.m. And due to the volume submitted electronically, I'm gonna just ask if it will be made a part of the official record and ask that it be noted that it be included in the minutes in its entirety. I do have those original electronic concerns with me today. It's available if anyone wants to inspect them, but we did receive them and they will be made a part of the record. Thank you.
Very good. With any further questions from council?
I think probably with staff, in some of those comments, and I read those today and tonight, we also had a comment that somehow Part B of this is somehow eliminating the cap on, I think, commercial development. But I, I don't see that, and I'm just wondering, am I missing something? It seems to be a, we've made the caps variable between residential and commercial if we pass this.
That, that is correct, sir.
So, I mean, they can't eliminate, they can't eliminate residential because they couldn't get down that far with the transfer.
That's correct.
Okay. So it's just a matter of, they can change the balance between the two. I wanted to make sure I wasn't missing that.
Did you answer that? I'm sorry, Mr. Chambers, I'm sorry, I didn't hear the answer to that question.
Not sure if the microphone's working. Can you hear me?
I hear you.
Please.
Yes, that would, it's just as Mr. Grady said, it's, it would be a balance between the two, and one goes up, one goes down. The cap is being requested for residential at thirty-three-thousand-three-fifty, and the non-residential is one million, but obviously, they can't get to that point because they've already started using that conversion factor.
But the point being, they can't completely eliminate commercial. There's no way that formula could ever do that.
That is correct.
So it's a, it's a question of how much commercial. And as we know, right now, at least, commercial doesn't seem to be what people want to bill so much. But here, they're gonna have to bill some, right? Because they've got an area here that's only gonna be zoned for commercial.
Yes, a couple of questions, Brian. One, and you, I believe you may have listed some of these things in your opening comments, but in MX, I mean, clearly, the, the goal is mix. But it seems to be the, the great concern here that this is some, you know, this, this zoning is what they're going for instead of MFL, MFM, or MFH to, you know, it's kind of like a disguise for that, if you will, for lack of a better term. If, if the developer wanted to, could they put MFH or MFM in one of these blocks under the MX that we're granting them potentially tonight?
By MFH, you mean, could they put multifamily? Could they put multifamily? They could put multifamily buildings in that, in the MX.
Without any mix.
There's, there are certain limits that they're held to in the MX. I believe it's eight units per acre, but then you can get bonuses based on other thing, other criteria that are being met. So potentially, they could get, I mean, they are proposing apartments, and we're not gonna deny that at all, but the fact that they, they would be restricted.
Rendering us all should.
Right, there, there, there's a required mix of uses in the MX. So they can put apartments in there, but they're gonna have to show us how they meet the required mix. So it can't be one-hundred percent.
That's what I'm getting at, a hundred percent apartment complex.
It cannot be one-hundred percent apartments, no, sir.
From ground to ceiling, from left to right to back to front, the whole thing, an apartment complex.
The MX would, no.
Okay, that's my question.
The MX would not allow that.
Um, the one, for the existing neighborhoods, I guess to the, kind of the east, northeast of there, east of there, we've had several people speak on, in, from that area. Who, and I believe that's, that's not incorporated, correct? It's not part of this, like a.
Not in the city?
Not in the city.
It's unincorporated county, yes, sir.
So, but, so which poses a, I mean, a little bit of a conundrum because I haven't been down Arnold Road, but now I wish I had been. The connectivity there, which is the one that will drop in there, I guess, by the, I had been to the school before, so that's a couple of blocks over. But who, who makes the call on whether that's a, a good idea to even make that? I mean, connectivity as a general rule is positive, but not if the road can't handle the traffic, not if it's not built to a certain width or a certain, you know, can bikes, can people walk, I mean, what's the speed limit, all that kind of stuff? Who, being that that's the county and we're gonna open this gate, who, who monitors that? Who decides if that's a good, safe idea?
Great state of North Carolina. They own the roads in the county, and they make that determination, and they work with our department, I mean, our transportation folks to determine that. Am I correct, Mr. Jordan?
That is correct. Counties are not authorized under state law to operate roads or build roads. If it's in unincorporated county, it's a state road.
So I would imagine that when this development was being considered back in two thousand and six, seven, eight, nine, that the Department of Transportation worked with the city officials in the annexation process about the connectivity. And I know at that point in time, since there wasn't any residents, except for those that lived there off Arnold Road in, in that particular area, connectivity has been one of the cornerstones of trying to alleviate some of the traffic issues that we've seen for many years here where we've blocked off neighborhoods and people have to go all the way through, like we see on Greenville Loop Road where there's no access to Oleander Drive, and yet everybody's gotta go up and down that one road, either to Pine Grove or Oleander. So connectivity has always been one of the cornerstones of trying to alleviate that, but it's also one of the most contentious things because no neighborhood wants to access into another neighborhood or commercial, and I understand that side of it, too.
I would think it's somewhat like, you know, we had some objection to connecting to the backside of Mayfair, and that's proved to be no problem, actually, a good thing for the most part. It's just, we're, we're opening that gate, but yet we'll, the state will be the person that deals with any infrastructure issue on our, on the road, is what I'm hearing. My other question, I guess, is for, for Michael. So if some, why don't we, if somebody has, so we're shuttling out of rooms, if, if any of my other council members have questions for you, let them finish and then maybe bring Michael up, does that work, ma'am?
Well, thank you. Clifford, I know you've got a question.
Clifford, you're muted.
Clifford, I'm sorry, you're muted, sir.
I clicked a little thing. Clicked a little red mic from.
I got it. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Daddy. Just a question. When, when, when the developer does an environmental study, because I heard that they, they did one in two thousand and seven, is one environmental study enough for a project or do they do them, depending on how long the project takes?
I think the environmental impact was done at the outset because of what was done for overall infrastructure for the entirety of River Lights. When they come in later, after all those improvements were made, and they start developing these individual pieces, that, those studies aren't required for the individual pieces. They'd have to identify wetlands and provide buffers and setbacks, whatnot, that are consistent with our code and with the state requirements, but there's not a, an environmental impact study or statement that's required on these individual components of the overall River Lights.
Okay. And then I guess my second question would be put in the developer for you. I'd like somebody to address the, the traffic issue, because I hear that all the time, and I just want them to kind of talk a little bit about that.
Well, like I said in my presentation, based on the uses that are allowed right now versus what's being proposed, there is an overall decrease. As the mayor alluded to, when this came through, originally, the NCDOT was part of the discussions when they were doing their traffic impact analysis, and that's why we have multiple connections to those surrounding neighborhoods to help disperse that traffic. And we also feel that providing these uses in a central location in that area will capture trips. It will get people to go to this location as opposed to getting on Sanders or Carolina Beach Road or Independence to get their daily needs met.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Raffmore?
When this was all done, back in, when the plan was first submitted and approved, I mean, everybody knew that this was gonna be a pass-through neighborhood. I, I look at River Lights as a neighborhood, like the folks that live in it think of it as their neighborhood. But, I mean, we went so far as to reserve the right-of-way to increase that, that, that road through there to four lanes, and at some point in the future, that will happen. You know, I, for one, was a bit surprised when I saw that there was gonna be connectivity into the neighborhoods. And, you know, the quick fix would be to, you know, close that up. You know, I think a lot of that traffic that they're seeing is probably some of the people that live in their neighborhood that are using it to get to River Road. And of course, that doesn't discount the fact that people on River Road go through there. Somebody mentioned well ago, the, the lack of a connection between Oleander Drive and Pine Grove. Well, Ingleside and the Clearbrook neighborhood catches all of that that comes out on Oleander, the old Romanelle's Restaurant. So those are things that happen, but, you know, that connector street, I feel for those folks, but I would have thought that would have been a plus for those neighborhoods to have that connectivity. But the traffic on, on that road, it's, it's gonna, it's gonna increase, but we're ready. I mean, it's not like we've got to go back out there and buy right-of-way and put in all the infrastructure. That's been done, so.
It's also those other lanes have already been prepared, the underlayman or whatever call it. That's already been done.
The traffic, the, I think the traffic that a lot of these people are seeing is, is being generated by their neighbors. I mean, I don't see pass-through traffic going on. I would go out there, I, I think it's amazing to see what's being done out there, and I ride through there, and that certainly is not what I would call pass-through streets. It's like a, it's almost like a maze going through there, which I think is perfect the way they've been laid out.
I'd also like to mention that if you have any more detailed questions about the traffic, our city's traffic engineer is available for questions as well. He may be able to provide some more in-depth answers as opposed to what I'm able, have the ability to do.
Well, you know, one of the concerns that I've heard from the neighbors is, and it seems to have created a tremendous amount of angst out there, and for whatever reason or another, people have looked at a master plan of some sort. It has been changed, but tell me a little bit more about the apartments, because it seems like the apartments, as soon as the apartments came up on River Lights, that's when we started seeing a lot of concerns from the folks out there. And I guess it'd be a question for the developer and for, or for the developers' representatives, was there master plans shared with these folks? I understand when we did this development many years ago, mixed use was the concept, still is the concept. That's something that, it's in the Comprehensive Land Use Plan that we've worked on, where you have a mixture of uses, single-family residential, apartments, condos, townhouses, commercial. Has it always been in the mix? Because I, I believe that Mr. Lee alluded to the fact that under the current zoning, as it speaks today, they can already put an apartment complex in this mixed-use component, and yet there seems to be a tremendous amount of concern about deviating away from that. Has it always been part of the mix?
Yeah, apartments are always allowed in the MX. I don't, I'd have to defer the app because of what they've shared with.
Sure.
The residents out there. My review of some of the plans that I've seen in the past, it just identified as MX and future developments. There was nothing specifically identified for the areas where the, the newer apartments just got built. And Mr. Lee is correct. Um, and, and Mr. Lee is correct. The R7 Cluster subdivision, um, in certain situations, I think you gotta have a minimum acreage size. You can have up to 12 units in a multifamily building.
So basically, Brian, what, what's happening here is we're reducing the amount of commercial space and increasing the amount of residential units, whether they be apartments, condos, townhouses.
That's correct.
And in that analysis that you folks have looked at with the Newland folks, you've analyzed, I guess, through our traffic engineering to, to, um, verify what their numbers are, that there will be a reduction in the amount of traffic as opposed to an increase in the amount of traffic, taking into consideration everything that is coming into that area from River Road, from south of, of, of Monkey Junction, Sanders Road, and all the other areas. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And the reduction is about a million square feet?
Uh, i- it would be less than a million, because they're, they're capped at a million. So, um, I, I believe Mr. Lee provided.
Mr. Lee, I, I can see Mr. Lee.
Really good slide example of what that looks like.
I just like to ask a little bit more questioning on that. What is the, the total reduction? And then i- in, in respect to, to the, to the, um, commercial place?
So if it was a total buildout of the 3350, it would be somewhere between 450 and I think 650. I don't have that slide up. Uh, but it just depends on, because it's a sliding scale, it really depends on how much, uh, you convert from commercial to residential. But between 450 and 650, i- if there's a total buildout of the 3350.
And, and I guess, um, Mr. Lee, when, when you folks came back in here to, to, to do the reduction in the commercial, the mindset being that, I guess, market conditions are that the retail has changed, people, I guess, are buying more online, buying from Amazon. What, what's, what's the premise of, of the reduction of, of, of that?
So if you think about when, um, when the property was acquired in 2006, there wasn't even an iPhone yet. Uh, the re- the conversion formula was in 2013. So you already started to see, um, the, the, the changes in the, in the market and the way, um, we did things. And they were trying to project out to, at 2013 into 15, 16, 17, 18, and to today. There's been some folks who have said that they moved in and then we changed the conversion formula. The conversion formula was put into place in 2013. I think the first resident moved in in 2016 or 17. Um, so really, it, it's just been the market change that, that really has created that difference. Where the apartments are located, I think people are concerned about, that's in the MX. And apartments were always considered to be part of the MX, but it could have very well been, you know, a, a super Walmart, um, you know, or something like that, which, you know, from a code perspective, I don't think Newland would have done that. But from an entitlements perspective, that MX could have allowed a whole host of uses right there in that particular location. That, uh, the complex that is there now, I know it's under construction, you can't really see it yet. They're required to, to follow, uh, architectural controls that are put forth by Newland. And sometimes when, um, folks talk about Newland, that they talk about apartments, or they talk about single-family, or they talk about different things. Newland, um, is a, it's called Newland Communities because they develop communities. They don't just develop projects and pockets. They really look at the entire community. And as time goes on, uh, within, uh, the broader community, when things change, they go in and they try and have the opportunity to change what they are creating as part of the River Lights community. There has been a dramatic number of changes, not just in our economy, in the way we do things every day from 2007, when they first purchased the property to today.
And then the other question I had, there was a gentleman that had made up, it indicated that the two parks, or one of the parks that you have there, I guess is a public park. I know that they have open space and there's areas there that they have, I guess, um, at least I saw some, um, some areas where swimming pools and what have you. But the, 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 the public parks, i- i- there was an indication that there was nothing but, but wetlands. What, what is the case with the park? I know there's two parks, I guess, one on either end, one on the north end, one on the south end. Could you tell me a little bit more about the public parks? Because it made it sound like there was, I don't know. I haven't seen that. I'm s-
So, so the idea behind, um, the project and also what the city wanted to see as part of the comprehensive plan is to be able to interact with the river and the creeks. Um, so the, the park that is contained within the MX3 parcel, if you were looking at the project, would be off to your right. That was really intended to be able to get access to the creek. So yes, I'm sure there, there is quite a bit of that within, um, within a wetlands area. These parks are intended to be passive parks, not ball fields and things like that. They're really, a- and Newland wanted to make sure of that because they really wanted to create this connection with nature and the water. And that was really the planning piece of it. As to the park that's over by, um, the substation, I'll have to let, um, answer that particular question, because I'm, I'm not sure about that one.
Mr. Mayor, the park that's on the northern end of the property does not have, uh, that has some wetlands on very northern tip of it. But in general terms, that, that property is, uh, is wetland-free. Um, it also connects over to the air, the parcel that is now known as what will be the, the fire station parcel. So it will be a, you know, kind of a comprehensive look, uh, by the city of the, the fire station and the parkland itself. The area on the MX3 parcel, the one we designate as open space, that area is wetlands. Uh, and you can, if you see the bubble plan, you will clearly see there's a, a big finger of wetland that comes down into that parcel. It is preserved in that manner, uh, as we've done throughout River Lights in preserving, uh, the wetlands and providing the buffers to them. The parkland itself, although it will have wetlands associated with, uh, a, along the banks of Motts Creek, but it certainly is not, uh, not as, uh, inhibited as the open space parcel is. The original discussions long ago on that, that particular piece was to have a nice little kayak launch, uh, into Motts Creek. That's one of those creeks that there's, there is a lot of kayak action in, uh, and it was set up for, in that manner so that, uh, it would be that passive park, as Michael spoke of. Uh, and, and that's the way Newland has always looked at it, and that's the way it's been on all the master plans, uh, and, and any of the, any of the diversity that has, or any of the changes that have gone on over the years. That, that parkland has stayed in place. Uh, it is adjacent to the driveway, the gravel drive that goes up to, uh, the, the Progress Energy Substation. It is a natural break. Uh, it's a natural break in topography as well as in, in the land, the landmass change. Uh, and there will be access into that park, because the access road that is there for Progress Energy that's used every day will be parts of that access road. Now, whether it becomes paved or stays gravel, uh, that's yet to be seen. That will be, uh, determined as, as that part of the, uh, parkland develops.
Mr. Collier, uh, there was another comment made by one of the gentlemen, uh, in respect to the water quality in Bernard's Creek and some of those creek areas. I, I, I do know a little bit about stormwater issues, because we've dealt with them for years here at the city. Um, and I know that prior to 1991, there was no stormwater permitting process, and a lot of the older subdivisions directly went into the creeks, waterways. And of course, that's something that the city is trying to retrofit, the county's trying to retrofit a lot of the old subdivisions in, in, in areas where they have no stormwater infiltration systems. Can you give us a little bit more detail about your, your stormwater management for that? And to assure that the residents and the people that live there, and I'm sure some of them know it, some of them don't, what are you doing for stormwater quality, uh, in respect to this? And I, I do remember way back when this thing was voluntarily annexed into the city. I guess Mike Mallon with the University of North Carolina at Wilmington, a great biologist here, water quality gentleman, that came to the city and, and indicated that they were very, uh, happy with, uh, the, the way that Newland was going to protect the water quality for the Cape Fear and those areas. Could you give me a little bit more insight into that, if you don't mind, please?
Yes, sir. I'll be happy to. Uh, one of the things that was mentioned, and it, and it is on our bubble plan, is that the MX3 parcel is not within River Lights' master stormwater permit. That is a true statement. We have ta- River Lights overall has a low-density stormwater permit that was issued, uh, back in 2008, um, from, from state and then transferred into the city. Um, so it has an overall, uh, impervious surface, a maximum impervious surface, if you will, uh, throughout that entire development. And it's, and it's all about low-density residential. In the MX community in and of itself, it's not always lower density. So, but, so we have a master stormwater plan for the MX parcel that if you note on the, the bubble plans and some of the other things that are in your package, we have a larger stormwater facility, a lake that's in the central, centrally located in the MX3 parcel that drains all of the, uh, everything, Arnold Road and, uh, north drains into this stormwater, uh, into this stormwater pond. And then we will have additional, the school will have their own stormwater facility on that side. And then there will be one on the, on the property that is, uh, on the right side of Arnold Drive. It will have its own stormwater facility. Uh, the statement that was made, a- and I made it at the public meeting, um, that the water would go into the ground is a very valid statement. We fought for years, early on, with, uh, erosion control and stormwater on the rate of infiltration on this property. Uh, there's an infiltration basin today that sits at the corner of, uh, Water, uh, Watercraft Ferry and Old Town Road that very rarely has water in it. It completely, and it is directly adjacent to one of the wetland pockets. We have infiltration rates that are near what you see on the sand at the beach. And I know that doesn't make sense to everyone, but that is in fact what we have. Uh, so we have as much infiltration on this 1,300 acres as humanly possible. Um, we will have a pond that will have treatment volumes in it, but it will also discharge into the roadside ditch for higher-level storms. Uh, and it will go down and ultimately it will go into, uh, everything discharges into a creek of some sort if there is a discharge. But our overall master stormwater plan for River Lights is maintained. It has been maintained throughout the entire property, and we are continuing that same master planning of stormwater in the MX3 parcel as well.
So the main stormwater pond is the 30 acres there where they have the walking trail, I guess, around it that I see?
And that, that's, uh, Mr. Mayor, that's a fallacy of what everyone thinks. That stormwater, that lake does not treat any stormwater. It is truly an amenity pond. There, there is no stormwater discharge into that lake whatsoever. Um, and I think most folks feel like that is our stormwater treatment, but, but it is not. See, the, the lake itself wouldn't hold the water, so, uh, we spent bukus of money, uh, and I know bukus is not a very good term, but I don't recall, uh, the actual dollar amount, but quite, quite a bit, to actually line that lake to keep the water in it, so that when we put the trail around it and we put the fountains in, um, it then becomes an amenity for the neighborhood, and it's not just a big stormwater pond. Uh, so right now, this, this pond is able to have kayaks in it and have other, uh, other modes of, um, recreation that, uh, most stormwater ponds, i- if it were a stormwater pond, you cannot do.
Thank you for the clarity.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Robbmore?
Well, Mr. Collier, uh, that, the, the system that you just described will, will handle the runoff for any future construction. Is, is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, it handles the, the current and future, future runoff needs, and it meets all the cities and the states' criteria.
And the, and the, the axiom that post-construction runoff can't exceed pre-construction runoff applies still?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Anderson?
Uh, the mayor kind of got ahead of me on my question from Mr. Lee, but I, I, I'd like to follow up on that. So a little bit with, with Mr. Lee. I mean, it, and I think, and, and this may be just more of an observation, too, but when you have a project that's proposed, you know, I guess in one of the biggest real estate bins we've ever seen, what, '06? Whenever it was, to, to, around that time. And then you, you look at completion, I don't know when that may be, you know, another 10 years or five years. So you're talking, you know, 25-year project. Market conditions change, and they don't just change on the, from the commercial to the residential, but the type of residential that people desire. I know two pe- two of our council members that are sitting in rooms right now, they're, they were in a home. Now they're not. You know, that's typical. That's, I mean, that's, that's happening in, in all age brackets, um, which I've, that's never really been the case. Um, people are moving back to cities, et cetera. There are just a lot of trends, and when a, uh, somebody like Newland goes to the huge, you know, makes a huge investment in the property, moving River Road, all the infrastructure, they're gonna wanna shift with it in order to recover their investment. That's what they do. I mean, I mean, so would you comment at all, you commented earlier about the change in technology and the change in retail? And the change, you know, the, the fact that, you know, I look over here and, you know, Stein, Stein Mart's gone out of business. Penny's, I mean, Sears, I mean, you can, you can see, you ought to be able to see it if you hadn't noticed, things are changing. But can you comment also on the, the, the move to smaller, uh, living quarters? Or just the changes involved when trying to manage a project that lasts this long?
So I think that, um, one of your points, um, the whole reason behind a development agreement in North Carolina. And North Carolina was not the first state. It was actually a little behind the eight ball, uh, in states that developed, uh, had this process of a development agreement. And the development agreement was there so that a municipality or, or county could hold, um, the developer to, to match the infrastructure with the development. And in the case of Newland, um, they built, um, just about all that infrastructure upfront. And, and that, and that's not what we do in North Carolina. Usually, infrastructure lags development, which is why we have so many planning problems in North Carolina. And in areas in which we have explosive growth, like we have in our area, it becomes even a bigger issue. And that's what you've seen in other parts of our community. One of the interesting things with, um, and I said this in, in 2009, um, when I first appeared before, uh, the city council, I said that, that I would invariably see, uh, y'all every three, four, five years as, as times changed and markets changed. But what the city had as an obligation upfront was all of this infrastructure that Newland agreed to put forth from the very beginning, so that, um, you could actually plan the infrastructure to go along with the development. And that's kind of what you've seen here. In coming back with the conversion factor, we're obligated and actually put in, you know, most of the improvements already, water, sewer, um, traffic improvements. But what the city is doing is in this conversion factor, we're still required to, to put all that infrastructure in. We put it in, a- and now you're reducing, uh, one area of impact and increasing another area of impact so that it's neutral. Um, and in this instance, it's actually much less of an impact, in particular with respect to traffic. So that's what the development agreement was for. You're absolutely right. As times change, as the market changes, as, um, as people's, uh, the type of home that they live in, whether it's for rent or whether it's to purchase, has changed dramatically over the last decade.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Mr. Spears?
There's, this is not really a question, it's more so a comment, but with all of this development, there's something that I have not heard, and that is workforce housing slash affordable housing. Was that, was that ever entertained? Ever an idea? Mr. Lee?
Uh, that was not something that, that was, um, put into the project in the beginning or in, in each of the 2013, 16, and I think 18, I don't remember the exact dates, uh, put into the equation. I know that the plan, there was one planning commissioner that felt pretty strongly about that. And while he supported the, the MX rezoning and supported the project, he essentially initiated somewhat of a protest vote. Uh, it was the one vote that we lost to planning commission, because that was not something that was incorporated overtly.
And along those lines, with that being said, what is the target audience for this? I mean, not audience, but the target, uh, who are we targeting for this development?
I'm, I'm gonna have to ask my client to come up for that piece of information, because it's more of a business question. So give me just one quick second, have him come out of the room, if you don't mind.
No problem.
I'd like to introduce you to Nick Casala. He's the, the VP of Operations, um, here on site at River Lights.
Good evening, council members. My name is Nick Casala with Newland Communities. And, uh, since I wasn't in the room, I couldn't quite hear the question. Would you mind repeating the question, sir?
Who, 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 who are we targeting to move into River Lights community? This, the new, the amendments or the new development or?
Well, from the very beginning, River Lights has been envisioned as an all-inclusive community. There's a variety of products and price points, and that includes both, uh, residential product for sale as well as residential project for rent. And, um, I would say that the end of the day, there'll be a variety of, um, products when we're completed, just like the original vision for the community.
Well, could you give me a price point of those varieties?
Well, currently, there's, there's, uh, townhome product that exists in the community that, with a price, uh, in the low to mid 200s. And, uh, you know, there's a, there's an upward end that exceeds, uh, five, six hundred thousand. an upward end that exceeds uh five, six hundred thousand dollars. Apartment community, apartments in River Lights today, of which there's forty-five completed units, uh are typical of market rates that exist throughout the city of Wilmington.
Any other questions for, from, from council?
I've got one, I've got one. I'm sorry. Um they mentioned the one hundred and twenty-five thousand square foot warehouse. Now, that's not gonna happen, right?
Uh Mr. Burnett, the one hundred and twenty-five thousand square feet was in our original application, the warehouse.
Right.
It, it is not permissible in the MX three or in the MX zoning category. It was completely removed and everything that you are looking at today in your package does not include uh any, any mini warehouse.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hey, Richard, why are you there? Was commercial development fading the reason for the amendment?
Was commercial development feigning the reason for the amendment? It, it is a part of the reason, yes. The changes in the market, uh the marketplace itself. Uh and it is to spread the development, spread the commercial out uh throughout. So you, there are, I mean, it's a three mile section of road. So if we can, if we put it all in Marina Village, in that small little area, that nice little quaint Marina Village, then we are, and particularly if we left it at a million square feet, there's no way that that area could support that or would want that. Where that's where the largest of the oak trees are. That's where the pristine land is. Um so when we move it away and spread it out, it, it gives everyone in the neighborhood better opportunities to get to that neighborhood style retail uh and have those services closer to them. Um so that, that, that's the biggest reason for the changes, is getting it to where we can mix those uses together uh and have it so it is supported by all.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, everybody. I'm gonna close the public hearing and ask for the wishes of the council in respect to item PH one A, which is the ordinance approving the First Amendment to amend and restated development agreement with NNP for Cape Fear River LLC for the River Lights master planned development. And I will mention, I believe that somebody has to read a consistent statement that whoever makes the motion.
Mr. Mayor, the consistency statement is required for one B, not one A.
Correct. Sorry. Thank you, sir.
Was, excuse me, was that sent out to us uh?
Yes, it was. You should have received it just prior to six PM this evening.
Our, our promotion that we um approve the item.
One A. And we have a motion made by Councilmember Barnett, second by Councilmember Anderson. Okay, how do you vote, uh Ms. Spears?
No.
How do you vote, Mr. Barnett?
Aye.
How do you vote, Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
How do you vote, Mr. Grady?
Aye.
How do you vote, Mr. Avanbar?
Aye.
How do you vote, Mayor Pro Tem? And chair, chair's eye. That is approved on first reading. We will hold this for our second, for our second um or our second reading on December the first of twenty twenty. Now to item PH one B, which the ordinance modified an existing conditional district to rezone one hundred and twenty point twenty acres of larger one thousand three hundred and fifty-eight point seven-two acre tract known as River Lights from R seven C D residential conditional district to MX C D for a new mixed-use center as part of the River Lights master planned development. And this will, will require a consistent statement for the record. What are the wishes of the council in respect to the item?
I would move the item, Mayor.
And Mr. Avanbar has the motion.
Second.
Second by Mayor Pro Tem Haynes. Mr. Avanbar, will you read a consistent statement for the record, please, sir?
Yes, I will. Uh I move to approve the proposed amendment to rezone property located at forty-four ten River Road to modify an existing conditional district to rezone a portion of the site from R seven C D residential conditional district to MX C D mixed-use conditional district for a master planned mixed-use center and find it to be consistent with the relevant policies in the comprehensive plan based on the application materials and the information provided at the public hearing and in the staff report and to find approval of the rezoning request as reasonable and in the public interest for the following reasons. The proposed modification allows for a new mixed-use center to be created that would provide a variety of uses and a range of housing types and would provide greater access to services for area residents.
Okay. All right. How do you vote?
No.
How do you vote, Ms. Barnett?
Aye.
How do you vote, Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
How do you vote, Mr. Grady?
Aye.
How do you vote, Ms. Ravenbar?
Aye.
You vote, Mayor Pro Tem?
Aye.
And chair's eye. It passes. Okay, and this will also be heard at our next um scheduled council meeting on December the first twenty twenty, be under, heard under a second reading.
Mr. Mayor, can, can I make a comment here? Uh with, with, sir?
Yes, sir.
With regard to the neighborhoods that lie to the north of, of this where the access or the connector streets are, uh, you know, uh, Mr. Anderson and I serve on the, the Metropolitan Planning Organization, and I will certainly uh bring it to their attention that perhaps the state can uh do, 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 put a close look on these roads and see if there's any improvement that the state can do because the city, that's not, that's not under our purview, uh those roads in the unincorporated area. So I understand their, their concerns and uh I will, I will certainly, in fact, we have a meeting tomorrow afternoon at three o'clock and I'll bring that up.
Thank you, sir. That brings us to our next item of business, which is our ordinances. Item oh one is an ordinance designating the Kazoo uh Williams Crow House at seventy-four thirteen and seventy-four seventeen Masonville Sound Road as a local historic landmark. Uh this is um following a second reading. So at this time, I'd like to recognize City Manager, Mr. Chitum. Mr. Chitum?
We do not have a staff presentation. As the mayor pointed out, this item was approved on first reading at your last meeting. If there are questions, we happen to try to respond to them.
Okay, very good. Any, any other questions for council? If not, what are the wishes of the council in respect to the item?
Make the motion.
And the motion made by Mr. Anderson?
Second.
Second by Mr. Grady. Okay. How do you vote, Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
How do you vote, Councilmember Barnett?
Aye.
How do you vote, Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
How do you vote, Councilmember Grady?
Aye.
How do you vote, Councilmember Ravenbar?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem, how do you vote?
Aye.
And the chair's eye. Okay, that's approved. Okay, that brings us to our next item, which is item oh two, which is an ordinance authorizing the mayor to execute any and all agreements to transfer two tracts of land at SCP EW River Place LLC in order to allow for Brownsville tax credit. I believe that we do have to um, I guess, two members.
I request to be recused.
I also.
We have um Mr. Grady and Mayor Pro Tem, they're asked to be recused from this particular item. Do we have a motion?
Yes.
Make the motion.
We have a question made by Councilmember Ravenbar, second by Councilmember Anderson. Uh take a vote on that. Um how do you vote on that, um Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
How do you vote on that, Councilmember Barnett?
Aye.
How do you vote on that, Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
How do you vote on that, Councilmember Ravenbar?
Uh aye.
And then the mayor, so that uh you are now recused from that particular item. So this time I'd like to recognize City Manager, Mr. Chitum. Mr. Chitum?
Mr. Mayor, this item also was approved by you as you noted at your last meeting. We do not have additional information or a presentation for you. We happen to try and respond to any questions you may have.
Okay, very good. Any questions? Not? What are the wishes of the council?
Our promotion that we move the item.
Motion made by Councilmember Barnett.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Ravenbar. Okay, how do you vote, uh Councilmember Spears?
Uh.
How do you vote, Councilmember Barnett?
Aye.
How do you vote, Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
How do you vote, Councilmember Ravenbar?
Aye.
Chair's eye. This item is approved. That brings us to our next item of business, which is item oh three, which is an ordinance making supplemental appropriations to the amount of one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to the special purpose fund for the Maids Park Pollinator Garden in partnership with CFCC Horticulture Department. At this time, I'd like to recognize City Manager, Mr. Chitum. Mr. Chitum?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Ryan Bril, Recreation Coordinator of our Community Services Department, present this item.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Um before you is an ordinance making a supplemental appropriation in the amount of twelve hundred and fifty dollars to the special purpose fund for the Maids Park Pollinator Garden in partnership with Cape Fear Community College's Landscape and Horticultural Department. This ordinance aligns with the city council's focus to create a safe place by initiating community partnerships and creating an environment for teaching. With this um grant, we are able to utilize the funds to um build a pollinator garden. With the pollinator garden, our after-school program will be able to focus on healthy initiatives, learning. Um for instance, this past year, we had a vegetable garden. All twenty-five of our kids had their own vegetable plot. They learned how to raise plants, harvest, and they also learned how to, what healthy eating and how it'll impact their lives. Uh we want to continue our focus with outdoor environmental education and utilize this pollinator garden as a resource so we can teach the children about native wildlife, insects, bugs, and how they will play a vital role and um in helping sustain the vegetable gardens.
It's a good thing.
It is, it is. They enjoyed a lot. Um one thing we learned when we had them out in the garden, when they were helping us harvest vegetables, was they really, really enjoyed the insects and bugs. Uh we, we had kids that were jumping over heels for crickets and things like that. So uh we wanted to work with Cape Fear and make this happen.
Congratulations. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, what are, um, what are the wishes of the council in, in respect to item oh three?
Our promotion.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Councilmember Barnett made the motion, second by Councilmember Anderson. How do you vote, Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
How do you vote, Councilmember Barnett?
Aye.
How do you vote, Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
How do you vote, Councilmember Grady?
Aye.
How do you vote, Councilmember Ravenbar?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem, how do you vote?
Aye.
And chair's eye. That passes unanimously on first reading as a motion to waive second reading.
Second.
Motion made by uh Mayor Pro Tem Haynes, second by Councilmember Ravenbar. Okay. How do you vote, Councilmember Spears?
Aye.
How do you vote, Councilmember Barnett?
Aye.
How do you vote, Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
How do you vote, Councilmember Grady?
Aye.
How do you vote, Councilmember Ravenbar?
Aye.
Okay, and Mayor Pro Tem?
Aye.
And chairs, uh the passage unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our last portion of business, which is our reports. Item RP one is council's appointments committee for boards and commissions. And Mayor Pro Tem, Margaret Haynes, who is the chairperson of that committee, I'd like to recognize her at this time.
Um thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh while I chair that committee, um I'd like to remind everyone that uh Mr. Ravenbar and Mr. Grady also serve on that committee, and we're always looking for people to apply um to serve on a board or commission for which you feel you may be qualified and you can do that right online. Um so go to the city website and we hope people will apply. We have a very brief list of recommendations this evening. We have three of them. The first one being the Commission on African-American History and the recommendation is to reappoint Willie Black for a term that expires November eighteenth, twenty twenty-three. Secondly, the Hannah Block Historic USO Building and Community Arts Center. The recommendation is to move Jackie Booth to the New Hanover County School Arts Program position as their representative. She's actually serving now in an at-large position and we're moving her uh to the school representative. And that's a term that would expire um for twenty-one, twenty twenty-three. And lastly, the recommendation is for the Wilmington Tree Commission, and that recommendation is to appoint Ms. Kathy Luna to fill a vacancy, and that's a term to expire June eighteenth, twenty twenty-two. Uh and with that, I'll make a motion and ask for the council's support of those three recommendations.
A Mayor Pro Tem Haynes and I believe Councilmember Grady, did you make that second?
Yeah, sure.
Second's all around.
I heard your voice, Kevin. So I don't know.
I, I, I was either second or third, one of the.
How do you vote?
Aye.
Okay, Councilmember Barnett, how do you vote?
Aye.
How do you vote, Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
How do you vote, Councilmember Grady?
Aye.
How do you vote, Councilmember Ravenbar?
Aye.
How do you vote, Mayor Pro Tem Haynes?
Aye.
Chair's eye. That passes unanimously. This concludes our regular agenda. Are there any items to be brought forward by City Manager?
Just a reminder, Mr. Mayor, this Friday beginning at eight-thirty, we have a strategic budget work session with you scheduled. Be here in this, this facility, but we also providing you the opportunity to connect virtually because of the concerns over COVID that we all share. But we'll start the proceedings at eight-thirty on Friday. Hope you have the opportunity to come out and pick up your workbook for that meeting.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, Adam Parker, any items you want to bring forward? Mr. Attorney, Mr. John Joy?
No items, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Grady?
Nothing. Thank you.
Mr. Ravenbar?
Yes, sir. I just, uh, we had a passing of one of our wonderful city fathers here, Judge Gilbert Burnett, last week. Um a lot of people don't know this, but Judge Burnett in nineteen eighty-four, he told me one time, he said, I got tired of putting people in jail that needed to be out working and supporting their family and themselves. And he created the Community Service uh Work Program. And it's such a, a, a great model that uh states and cities around the country have copied it. And um I'm, I'm real particular about it because I take advantage of that uh with my work at the cemetery. We get wonderful people to come out there all year long to, to reduce their hours and at the same time help us. And not just the cemetery, but there are places all over town that benefit from that wonderful program that Judge Burnett uh birthed back in nineteen eighty-four. He was a great, a, a great judge, a great friend to everybody, a native of Wilmington, grew up on the water and uh be truly missed.
Thank you, Charlie. Councilmember Barnett?
Yes. Um Thanksgiving is next week and it should be different for all of us due to COVID. Um I'm just gonna encourage people to remain, you know, stay safe, listen to what the CDC is telling us. Wash your hands, wear the mask, and practice social distancing. But have a great and be grateful for all the things that God has done for us.
Thank you, Clifford.
You're welcome.
Well, I will reiterate a little bit of what um Clifford said. I mean, happy Thanksgiving to everyone. Have uh everyone gets to, to uh, to celebrate with family. Uh but I also hope we'll be very smart about us, the being around especially our older population and those in our families that might be more at risk. So be smart.
Thank you. Councilmember Spears?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, Kevin. Uh Mayor Pro Tem?
Um thanks. I, I just want to um, I guess emphasize what Charlie said and, and that Gil Burnett will really be missed by this entire community. He, he was not only a judge, but he was a friend to everybody and he will be sorely missed. Um and I also want to just encourage people again, I think we can't say it enough, to wear a mask. It's, there's nothing political about it. Um it's, it's not political to wear underwear. It's not political to wear a mask. It doesn't say anything about you being some sort of more of a patriot than anyone else. It's, do you care about other people? Do, do you want to stay safe yourself and keep your own family safe? And so I just encourage everybody um to, to wear a mask and stay safe over the holiday. Um we're, we're, it's, it's growing and it's for real and um we've just got to all look out for one another. So please wear your mask. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, everybody have a happy Thanksgiving. With that, we stand adjourned.